Meeting for the Valley Center City Council for April sixth, two thousand and twenty one is now in session. Roll call. Here.
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 Please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Gracious and loving God, I want to thank you on behalf of all of us who are gathered here tonight for the city council meeting. Thank you for blessing us in so many different ways. Especially thank you for the great opportunity you have given us to serve the city of Valley Center as a city council body. Lord, we need your help. We ask you blessing upon our city council leaders, members, and police officers, and EMS crews, and all the different levels of the city officers. Lord bless them. Give them your wisdom, understanding, guidance, and vision so that they may continue to lead the city to the place that the citizens have never been before. Lord, be with us. Fill our hearts, our minds with joy and excitement as we begin this meeting and bless our decision making. In Christ, let me pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, move on to item five, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six A, under the administration agenda, six city council meeting minutes from March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one.
Move to approve as presented?
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item seven, presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation and a presentation. We will start with the proclamation. This proclamation is to, is for National Library Week. After we're done, Janice Sharp with the library director will say a few words afterwards. And so, whereas our nation's school, academic, public, and special libraries make a difference in the lives of millions of Americans today more than ever. Whereas librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in the twenty first century. Whereas libraries are part of the American dream places for opportunity, education, self-help, and lifelong learning. Whereas library use is up nationwide among all types of library users, continuing a decade-long trend. Whereas libraries play a vital role in supporting the quality of, quality of life in their communities. Whereas libraries can help you discover a world of knowledge, both in person and online, as well as personal service and assistance in finding what you need when you need it. Whereas libraries are a key player in the national discourse on intellectual freedom, equity of access, and narrowing the digital divide. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week with the Campaign for American Libraries. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lou Cisarello, mayor of the city of Valley Center, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April fourth to April tenth, two thousand and twenty one, to be National Library Week. I encourage all residents to utilize our library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available and thank your librarians and library workers for making information accessible to all. Janice?
Thank you for the proclamation. That's wonderful. And I put a page at your, at your seats this evening. About the library reopening as of next Monday. We had no idea that we would have been closed for a year after what things started out last year. So we're going to be happy to have everybody back in. I might just follow up a little bit about our Easter egg extravaganza. We had planned for a thousand kids and we had, by our count, two hundred and sixty kids and a hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty kids, a hundred and sixty adults come through. So obviously, we had lots of things left. So we finally got everything put away today. It took five of us for three hours to get everything put away. So we're ready for next year. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Now, we also have a presentation from our treasurer, Matt Cohen, who is going to present to us our Valley Center app.
Good evening, all. Well, Tuesday. And we have some really exciting news about a new city app that we've developed. And we worked with Tyler Technologies, the same company that created our city management and accounting and billing software that we use. They, they helped us create this as well, which was really nice because it integrates really well with everything we already have. So just what you're looking at here is the, just the main menu of the app, which we kind of incorporated the Ferris wheel look as one of the, as one of the features there. And this picture in the background is a picture of Wetland Park. And I just want to run through real quick a couple of the features. It does a lot of stuff. It's capable of a lot of stuff. It's capable of more than what we've even loaded into it yet. And it is all live, so we can change it at any time. So this will be available in the App Store, hopefully, hopefully within the next couple of days. We haven't got it in there just yet, but we should soon. So just a couple of things. The little telephone in the top-left corner, if you touch that, it bring up a list of useful phone numbers in City of Valley Center. Everything from City Hall, Animal Control, the library, the pool, just things that would be good for our citizens to have easy access to. The city calendar links with our website and it'll have all the same information that the calendar on our website has. Also developed a really cool report of concern module with this. In the long run, we do hope to be able to integrate that along with our website and basically just have everything, all of our concerns that are reported coming into one place. This is a pretty cool feature. And then if you see a pothole you want to report it, you just go through and you say that and then you can type in what you want. You can take a picture. You can choose, choose a picture from your camera roll that you've already taken and submit it with it along with detailed instructions. You can submit it with your information or submit it anonymously, depending on what you're submitting. There are lots of options there and we can do lots of different things with that module as well. And along with that, on the resident's side, they also get the option of viewing what is called my report here on the side menu. And that will show anything. This one, this device hasn't had any, any, any issues reported, but it'll show anything. Even if they submit it anonymously, they can get updates because the app will remember their device. They'll get updates from us as we update the issues. And the app gives us the, the opportunity to send out push notifications to anybody that allows notifications on their phone. We can send to all. Or we can also choose just a geographic area. If there's an issue in for trash and we only want to choose the area that hits their trash service on Monday, we can pick just those people and send out a push notification if we need to. There is a lot of stuff that flows in from our website. That's like the, the brush and compost information and the trash and recycle information. Those are both things that have a lot of clicks on our website. People are looking for that information. So it's right here front, on, on the front menu. And then as well as online bill paying. When you go to those, it just takes you basically to the website so that you can proceed from there like you would normally. Parks and Public Buildings has a section here, which is really cool as well. I'm going to try not to keep this short because I'm really excited about this. Parks and Public Buildings is so cool. We have the list of all the parks and all, all the city buildings on here. All of their locations are loaded, so you can view them on a map. You can also get directions from right here in the app if you'd like to. So for example, if you want to see the map of McLaughlin Park, it is just that easy. We also have we have easy links here on the front page to other organizations that we have close relationships with, such as the Valley Center Recreation Commission. This links to their website, website, because we want to go there anyway. So that you can, you'll be able to view. It is a little slow here because we're also sharing the screen. It's taking up a lot of, a lot of the tablets abilities here. But you can, you can view all their programs and roll for programs and things like that within the app, even though you're, you're accessing their website, you're still within our app. The local business listing is, is being maintained by the chamber. And you can, you can view those listings. We have them in categories and you can view those listings by either geographical location or if you click, you can't really see it on the screen, but there's this little thing where you can switch it to alphabetical, however you choose to view them. And when you do that, you also get the option of viewing their, their websites, getting directions, whatever you need to, whatever you're interested in. On the side menu, up here in the little menu button in the top-right corner, there are more options of things that we thought were important to have, but not necessarily front menu, main menu worthy, which not, not to be insulting to the governing body, but we put the government app over here. Which one of the cool things there is that it does have all of you listed, so we can see all of your pretty faces and who you are and easily get in touch with you. And one of the most exciting things, I think, is just how useful it can be for our residents and for the city and other organizations. We can collaborate with, with them and, and put information on that's going to be useful. We can change out these, these selections on the menu at any time. So say we have garage sales coming up. We can make the one right in the center. When you log in, it could be the map of, of garage sales if we wanted to work with the chamber on that. Or if you wanted to do something to, with Fall Fest or whatever. There are lots of options. We're very, very excited about it. At least I am.
No. I, I do have two questions.
Absolutely.
Do we link to the library or the district's page?
Yes.
Okay.
Your visitors.
Just so I didn't catch those in there. I just wanted to make sure that they were both in there, especially with Janice sitting behind you. I don't.
They are both in there.
I don't want you to get hit with anything if it wasn't there, so.
And if anybody has questions or ideas or something they would potentially like to see on there, call me.
Councilmember Kurshtetter has a question.
They're going to be on both App Stores, Google, Apple, and what other?
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I would suggest walking and cycling paths. You know, a link to show people where, where they could walk. You know, we've been working on
The map.
Map for walking paths.
Okay.
That'd be, I think that'd be a great.
Pastor Jew behind you has a question. And I know where, I have a sneaky suspicion what this might be.
We're working on that. That's it. Because, because the local business listing, like I said, was, is, is being managed by the chamber. So Eric and I have been working about that. And, and he said that we're trying to decide whether we wanted to put churches under that side or.
Did you have another question, Councilmember Eric? Okay. I don't know which one of you two went first, so. I'll go. Councilmember Anderson.
I just had a question in regards to how do you plan on getting it advertised so people will know about it?
Facebook, Word of mouth?
Website.
Email, inserts in the water bills, however we can.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have such a versatile tool here that people are gaining access to it. So I don't want them to go, well, I've heard about this, but I don't know how to get it.
Oh, and we are, we are, we, we've, we've talked some about that too, about how to make it easier for people to get to it. Maybe we can, we got to play a little bit with whether we can do this. And I don't have the QR code yet because it's not in the App Store yet. But if I can get a QR code and we can print it somewhere easy for people or something that people receive frequently, maybe a water bill.
Councilmember Anderson.
I just wanted to thank any and all who worked on this. One of the things that I we talked about when I first joined council was, was getting us up to speed on technology. And it's taken a long time, but I feel like this will definitely get us where we need to be and, and can slingshot us forward. Because you're, you're leaving some of the older generation out when you do this, but you're also encompassing a huge part. And me serving at the senior center, I know that it's, it's actually just a stereotype because there are well over fifty percent of the people when they come in, or at least a year ago when they were coming in to eat, they all had their smartphones out too. So we'll definitely be pushing this for the seniors that are eating at the senior center and still coming through a drive-through. But I wanted to commend everyone who's worked on this. And I know this, this kind of stuff kind of gets pushed, pushed back when there's other pressing issues. And in the last year, we've had, you guys have been kind of flying by the seat of your pants. So I want to thank you for getting this developed and, and whoever is responsible. So thank you very much.
He's responsible. This is all on him. So.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Matt, did I see under the three lines there on the right upper corner, did I see something about switching to, switching cities?
This, okay, yes, you did, which will not be there. When, when, when this is live in the App Store, it won't be there. This is, is like the developer's version.
I was just thinking that if, if somebody lived in one community and had this similar, and they wanted to see what another community was like, maybe they're moving, that they could switch between cities and check out.
We won't be, once we, once we launch it with our name on it and our logo, it, if, if that, the switch city option won't be there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. You did a great job. All righty, we're going to move on to item eight, the public forum. This is the time that we would allow anybody here that's here in the building to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. And I see none. And we've had no emails, I'm guessing, because I haven't seen any. Great. We'll move on to item eleven, appointments. We have three appointments. Two are replacement, are the two replacements from the, the two that have resigned and one is a reappointment. Without any objections to any of the names on there, you, you, I would accept a motion for all three. And one's fell swoop unless you want to have discussions and then we can do them individually. It does not matter to me.
I move to appoint Brian Shelton, Steve Conway, and Rick Schellenberger.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We have no committees and commissions. We have no old business. We are going to move on to new business. Item A, approval of enterprise agreement. And I believe Mr. Smith, are you going to take the helm on this one?
So good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are bringing you a lease management agreement here from Enterprise. And tonight with us, we have Ken Olson from Enterprise to kind of give you a brief overview of the program, kind of go over the synopsis that was submitted in the packet along with that. Once that overview is done, I'll get up here and kind of go through how it's going to benefit the city as a whole. And then we'll go ahead and take your questions before asking approval.
Awesome. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me tonight.
Welcome.
Also wanted to thank Barry and the entire team, have all given me a lot of time up to this point in analyzing the program and getting us here tonight. So before we get into the fleet synopsis, I wanted to give you a brief overview of our program in general and just kind of give you a structure of what we're looking to accomplish here. So you all are probably very familiar with our Enterprise Rent-A-Car brand. We are the same company under the Enterprise Holdings family. On the fleet management side with my division, we leverage all of the tools, all of the resources, people, and everything that we have from operating the largest fleet in the country with our rental division to help government entities as well as commercial companies with small to medium-sized fleets like yourself. Save money, be more efficient. My role is getting the partnerships established. So working with Barry, working with the, the team and designing a financial and operational model, really getting the partnership in place. From there, we have local account teams. Justin Harper is going to be your account manager. And he is local in Wichita area. And we'll come out and meet with the team typically around four times a year. Always analyzing what did we do over the past twelve months? What are we looking to accomplish into the next twelve months? Analyzing the budget with you and with the team and always bringing those operational and financial efficiencies to play. To give you a quick idea of what we're talking about here from a financial perspective, we're looking to do eight F-150s here initially for this first round. And through leveraging your government buying power and the government incentives that you have, we're looking to acquire those vehicles for around thirty-two thousand dollars each. And we, through our equity lease model that we're looking to implement here, we're going to fund the vehicles from thirty-two thousand down to twenty-seven thousand. And then after approximately twelve months, seventy-five hundred miles, we're going to sell those on the city's behalf for around thirty-six thousand. So getting, replacing those vehicles with that segment every single year. Through that type of a structure, you can imagine that your operational expenses will be drastically lower from a fuel and maintenance perspective and continuing that model moving forward there. So we've worked with the team to implement the structure from a maintenance perspective, fuel acquisition, resale, and funding, which is built into this fleet synopsis that we have here. We also designed a model, and this is, the first page is just an overview. But if we get to the second page here, we designed a model that will allow us to implement this program over the next five years. And in summary, there is a significant savings, over a five-hundred-thousand-dollar savings over the ten years through implementing this program. So would, at this point, want to turn it over to you all to answer any questions that you have, whether from an operational perspective or just the program in general.
Counsel. I know there's going to be questions. Councilmember Stam.
How long is the agreement for? Is it a one-year, a five-year, a ten-year? How long are we signing up for this?
Yeah, so we have a master agreement that will get put in place that will allow us to lease or sell you vehicles. But then each agreement from a vehicle perspective is really the true contract, right? So for example, on these first eight F-150s, after twelve months, we, and we sell that vehicle on your behalf, there's no obligation to acquire another vehicle through Enterprise. So the, the contract can last as long as you like. And really, that's what we're looking for here, is we're looking for a long-term partnership. But at the end of the, end of the day, there's no contracts locking you into this partnership for the long term. We have to earn your business every single year.
Councilmember Kurshtetter.
All right. I'm not a fan of leases, so you're going to have to sell hard on this one. I don't know. It's going to be up to, what was your name?
Yeah.
Ken and Mr. Smith here to sell me on this because I'm definitely not a fan of it because we don't really own it. It's kind of a, my understanding of leases is you don't really own it because you have to end up selling them back to the company.
So this type of leasing is a little bit different, right? And we are not a leasing company. We're a fleet management company. And we have a lot of different options that you can choose. We have some entities that will sell funds, some use our net lease option. The option that we're talking about here is an equity lease. So what this is, is essentially a bank finance, leveraging your government buying power, funding down to a remaining balance based around your mileage pattern and the holding pattern that we're recommending. When we sell that vehicle, you get the equity. So it's different than your traditional net lease to where we would get the equity when we sell that vehicle on your behalf. A few additional differences. There's no early termination penalties. There's no over-mileage penalties, and there's no wear and tear penalties. So completely different from what you're used to with a traditional net lease structure. The reason our government entities are going this route so heavily is because it significantly decreases your budget and allows us to implement a much shorter cycle pattern than if we were to pay cash for the vehicles and run them out until they're dead, right? As we've done in the past. So it leverages our structure, our knowledge of the vehicle industry and vehicle market to give you a lot of flexibility and to reduce the budget.
You still have the floor, Councilmember.
Oh, thanks. So, okay, here, how do you make money then?
We are a for-profit company and we certainly do make money. We make money a little bit on the front end from a holdback perspective. When we sell the unit, at the end of term, we have a four-hundred-dollar service charge. We have a management fee that's built in to every single lease from a monthly perspective. It's a tenth of a percentage point of the delivered cost of the vehicle. So if it's a twenty-five-thousand-dollar vehicle, it'd be twenty-five dollars per month for that management fee. And then we have an interest component that is the three-year treasury bill plus three-hundred-and-fifty.
So these eight F-150s that you want to start us out with, how would they be the monthly fee?
From a monthly perspective, there will be a depreciation component, an interest component, and a management. That make, that answer the question?
Yeah, a little bit. I'm looking for dollars.
And one point to that, the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative that we are hoping to leverage here maps out all the different fee structures with absolutely everything.
You might need to turn up that mic also.
Can you turn that mic up? Oh. That's right. You don't have to go into the door anymore. I keep forgetting.
Can you hear me right now?
Yeah, you go.
Okay. We'll run through our help benefits the city as a whole section here, maybe that'll help answer some questions along with that. So with our current management practices, each department determines when the vehicle, when they need new vehicles. They handle all the RFPs, the bidding process, the outfitting, et cetera. They make the requests during budget time. If funds are available, we can recommend to present to council for approval. If they're finally approved, that's what kickstarts that whole process. Currently, we use a state contract for pricing, which we also use for this as well. Currently, right now, we get about one vehicle per year, per department, which is public safety, water, sewer, streets, and then parks and community development are as needed if funds are available. They don't have as many vehicles as everyone else, so they kind of fit in when we have extra funds there. It's extremely difficult to get more than one at a time right now. We are budget constraints. And then for our maintenance, all of our vehicles. And then for our maintenance, all of our vehicles are maintained in-house, just your basic maintenance, oil changes. Maybe belts and hoses, fluids, stuff like that. So the benefits from this partnership, um, we'll be able to use our purchasing power to rotate our fleet, uh, more often. Keep them very efficient. Safer and. Lower our overall maintenance costs as well. Other advantages are Enterprise handles the entire procurement process from purchasing to delivery. Uh, they monitor resale values on a constant basis. So they're going to let us know. Hey, if we sell these eight trucks right now, we can earn this much more on our projections. Or hey, let's hold on to these trucks for another six to eight months and resell them then when the market comes back up. So we can still make a decent profit off our investment. But the, the major, the biggest benefits of all are allowing us to be very flexible with our budget for the next several years. Um, our current costs right now, we average about 200,000 a year in vehicle replacements across those departments. Uh, we also have a mechanic who's about 55,000 a year, has salary plus all benefits, everything there. Basic maintenance costs add up to about $260,000 a year. So by utilizing that and utilizing Enterprise. We will have built enough equity upfront where we won't need to put any money towards any vehicle purchases for several years. By selling our current fleet and flipping those trucks in the first year to give us that extra leverage. So benefits us in several ways, including IT that's going to save us on utilities. Big benefits to public safety and also our streets department. Right now, as I've mentioned in our past interview report, our IT infrastructure is getting very old. Uh, we just got a quote the other day for one of our new servers, which is one of three. It's going to be about 16,000 to replace. And we'll need to get three of those coming up. By doing this, it's going to allow us that budget flexibility to attack this number here, which is our current infrastructure needs over the next three to four years. Just got this report from our IT company, uh, week and a half ago. Uh, which I'll be bringing back to you here shortly to address some of those concerns. So by repurposing that 200,000 a year, we already budget for vehicles for those first four to five years. We'll be able to address a lot of other concerns right now. Um, also as of 2018, a cool feature of all these vehicles is they can come with a hotspot installed in them. Which will eventually save us on utilities once we implement the entire fleet. Uh, it does that by eliminating all of our tablet and hotspot costs through T-Mobile. Which that alone will save us about five grand a year. Just because of the data plan that'll come with the vehicles is $200 a year. And right now we pay $40 a month for hotspots and data. So that saves us 200, what, $80 per vehicle. That area. Also our emergency equipment funds, as you know, it's funded with our one mill dedicated to that. By entering this agreement with Enterprise and using that equity for those first several years, we can reallocate that mill, which will be roughly about $60,000. Over a four-year period. And I know you, we've talked about it during budgeting times, is public safety is in dire need of radios. Uh, digital ticket software to help with their efficiencies, uh, maybe even look at a lease option on a, at least purchase option on a fire truck. For next several years, get that equity built up in that. Also for public safety, City of County is implementing a new RMS and CAD system next year, which we will be able to piggyback off of. And last meeting, I was here two meetings ago, we approved moving in code to the cloud, which. Turns out to be fantastic because now every vehicle we have is a mobile office. Now that every vehicle has internet connection through the hotspots, we can access in code. Which means if we end up doing, getting digital tickets for our police officers, by the time those lights go off, everything is in in code. They no longer have to hand their manual ticket to Phyllis, our records clerk, to input on her side. And then the tickets are brought over here for manual entry into our court system. Everything will flow electronically, improving efficiencies everywhere. Also, we, it would allow us to reassign our mechanic position to our streets department. And right now, nobody is in that position, so it's a perfect time to do that. Which will allow us to put one, almost two extra people into our streets department, which would assist us in our in-house patching for streets. And right now, a big part of our milling overlays, why they're so expensive, is that the higher company to come in and do the preliminary patching. Which if we do that by ourselves, just the material alone, the cost is getting down to 50%. So it's a, it's, it's a long string of things, but this one, this one decision has, it affects the system as a whole, citywide. Through public safety, public works, um, parks, our water department from being able to do service orders in front yards, completing tickets, everything. It has a citywide effect. But mainly our IT infrastructure up front. It's going to eliminate cost and time for our personnel entering data. Um, increase our options for public safety and CIP projects, purchasing those radios, everything like that. So that's how it helps the city as a whole. And just building that initial equity over those four years, allowing us to reallocate those vehicle funds up front. And it's going to get us in great shape technology-wise in the near future.
Uh, councilmember Anderson.
What is our average mileage per year for the different departments? Especially our public safety. What, what are we putting on those?
Public Works averages about 7,500. If that, and public safety is about 15,000 a year for those. And those are the thresholds we have in place right now for those specific departments in the agreement.
Is there any issue with getting the replacement vehicles outfitted with our equipment for either? Public safety or public works?
Nope.
Is that something they do? Or are we still, I don't, I don't currently know how we have our stuff outfitted. If it's a third party, if that's still going to be in place?
Yes, that will be in place. Um, Enterprise just handles the purchasing and delivery of the vehicle and then we'll handle the outfitting with our current vendor. And one thing I did forget to mention with this is with the maintenance agreement. All maintenance, instead of being in-house, will go out to our local. Vehicle mechanic shops here locally. Uh, they're already on the Enterprise preferred vendor list. So we just take them there, tell them what we need. They get in touch with Enterprise, all that transaction's handled on that side. So it helps us support the, our local businesses here in town as well.
Councilmember Gregory.
You answered one of my questions. I wondered about the mechanic. The other question, and I may have missed it. Insurance, we still cover that?
Yes, would you cover the insurance? In the original agreement, it said we had to go down to a $250 and $500 deductibles. Uh, we were able to amend that to what we currently have. So, uh, we'll see a slight increase just because of the newer age of the vehicles on our annual insurance bill, nothing else than that.
Councilmember Colbert.
Yeah, uh, one of the questions I have is, this is a one-year contract each year?
Yeah, it's really based on the vehicles that we get that year, uh, depending how long I want to keep them for. The public works vehicles, this first round will be one year. Uh, normally they'll go two to five years, depending on what type of truck they are, or what type of vehicle. Our public safety vehicles will be on like a five-year rotation. Um, just because we're going to get the most value out of them after that time period.
Okay, but what happens if one of those vehicles, say you get eight vehicles, one of those vehicles is a dud. Something is always going wrong with it. On a replacement of that vehicle, how soon would it be taken? And do we pay an additional cost for turning that vehicle back in to get a replacement?
Well, anything, well, these are going to be brand new vehicles, so everything's going to be in a warranty for quite some time.
Brand new vehicle can go to the next day.
Yeah, it goes the next day. And then with any of our, uh, basic maintenance, I mean, we pay 20 to $25 a month per vehicle. For that maintenance plan and everything's covered under that. We just pay Enterprise when we take it in. The Enterprise will then pay our mechanic or our vendor directly.
There is no time limit at all? Okay.
It's all good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Barry, currently, how many vehicles does the city have?
Uh, roughly 33.
How many? Three and three? So six?
33.
So I mean, I mean, though, we're talking about eight, we're talking about the purchase of eight, correct?
Yeah.
To replace part of the, the current fleet of 33 then?
Yep.
Okay. Exit plan. So if this in a year from now doesn't pan out as we feel like it should have. Then we've already eliminated eight vehicles, correct? Because we're selling them right on the front end, correct? So then we would be back to purchasing eight other vehicles to replace the ones that would come off of this, correct?
Well, we wouldn't sell them until we know we're ready to be done with the contract and then we have multiple options. We can either continue to lease out until the depreciation is zero, we can pay for them upfront, or, uh, what's the third option?
I'll send it fully depreciated. We can get out of the, we could sell the vehicle on your behalf, give you that equity. Um, or you can pay off the remaining balance.
And you did, you did say some numbers real fast there at the beginning that, so we're looking at like a $32,000 purchase price, correct? Is that what I heard you say roughly?
Yes, sir. On these F-150s, they, right around 32,000. And the reduced book value or the remaining balance is 27.
Okay, and then you're saying, uh, 12 months from now, you would turn around and purchase that back or sell it outright for 36,000 is what I heard?
We will sell it on your behalf. We never purchased the vehicle back with the equity lease model. We're selling it on.
Is there a guarantee?
There's no guarantee with the equity lease model. There would be a guarantee with the net lease model, but we want to give you the equity in this situation. All based around the market. If we, if we need to extend out due to market decrease, then we start like eight.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kerstetter.
One last, uh, thing I caught when you guys, I think Mr. Smith was saying it. Investment with vehicles. And vehicles lose to depreciate, so that's a bad policy to have is investment with vehicles. I don't, I still don't like this idea. That's where my opinion is.
I will say I did some reference checking with a couple of references listed in there with Doug from Goddard School District. And Clint from Hayesville School District. Uh, talking to them, they were both 100% satisfied with Enterprise and their system they have. Um, Goddard, for example, they rotate all their Suburbans on theirs. Um, they initially funded them upfront with about $6,000 apiece. Just sold all of them for about nine, 9,500 apiece. So they made $3,500 per vehicle, uh, for their first year turnaround on that.
Go ahead. I say one more thing. I do appreciate you looking outside the box though. For to. Just something like this, I appreciate you looking outside the box.
Yeah, no problem. It's trying to find ways to save money and the deficiencies.
No, I appreciate that.
Any other from council? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, councilmember Anderson?
Last thing I want to say is. We hired Barry to do the job that he does, or our city administrator hires everyone under him. He's more of an expert at this and deals with this daily than anyone up here. Our job is to have them. To check them on behalf of the citizens and to look out for our tax money. I have never once in the, however long I've been up here and however long Barry has worked for us. Seen him or anyone under him. Jumped the gun on anything. He's done his due diligence on everything. The biggest question mark I had on this was our getting into something we couldn't get out of. Um, and I think those questions and those worries were, were answered tonight. We have very minimal risk and I think the upside is huge and the potential to take money that would be. Forever lost and put it towards other things that we can use it for right now that are very much needed. Updating our IT because that, that gets behind so fast. And it, it, if once you're behind on it, you're, you're, you're playing catch-up forever. So. I'm fully behind this and I appreciate the amount of work that went into this.
Councilmember Stam.
Yeah, when I got this, I wasn't too thrilled about it. I'm, can't say I'm still too thrilled about it. It seems like it's too good of a deal. There's something hiding there somewhere.
I had the same feelings.
But I'm, I'm willing to give it a year's try. I mean, see what happens. But I'm still not too thrilled about it. It's worth a try for a year.
I actually, um, am in the same boat as councilmember Stam. I was really leery about it. But, uh, the one thing that kept going through my mind is what councilmember Anderson just said about you is that we, I know personally you do your due diligence. You're not going to bring something to us that is going to potentially throw us under the bus. And I appreciate that. And, and I think who's councilmember Kerstetter said, you thinking out of the box. You've done that quite a bit since you've been here. And you've done a great job with the financing. So I'm totally behind this too and, and based on what we've heard and. I think, I think we're going to, I think it's going to be better than we, the few of us thought before we heard the presentation. So. Okay, with that said, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Uh, if there's no other further comment, questions? All in favor, say, raise your right hand or hands. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries seven to one.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Thank you. Moving on, item B, ordinance 135421, rezone land along Fifth Street. Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy Tuesday. Here before you, uh, typically Mr. Ryan Track is taking care of this, but, uh, he did have a new little one. Uh, that was introduced to his family on March 16th, oh, 17th, I'm so sorry, on St. Patty's Day. On March 17th. So he is taking care of the family as we speak. Uh, before you, it's an item that did go in front of the planning commission at their last meeting. They did, uh, vote to approve. Uh, the rezoning of this property. I do apologize. I failed to put this in the packet. Uh, on Friday when it was sent out, but I did email it to you this morning as well as placed it, uh, in front of you, uh, this evening. Uh, this area is on Fifth Street, uh, just to the west of Broadway, two lots in. Uh, it's kind of that area where you see the llamas run around. I think they got a donkey now. That's kind of the location of this property. Uh, they're asking for the current zone of A1 to be switched to C2 for general business district. Uh, they are looking at potentially opening, uh, yes, uh, another potential coffee shop. Uh, and a little cafe, a little bit more inviting as far as having people be able to come, enjoy themselves. Have some outdoor games in that location, uh, have some seating outside and potentially inside as well. So. A young family and actually, uh, one of our brand new officers, Officer Hart, uh, him and his wife are the property owners at this location. I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Can we have the map put up here? Oh, even better. So, yeah, so the, uh, my question is with respect to question number two on the. What is this?
What is the current zoning?
Yeah, the current zoning on the property to the east. It says it's A1 Agriculture District. However. I believe a church in town actually owns that. So have they not rezoned it yet?
No, a, and, and a church can, uh, I mean, they can locate in any zone typically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're listed as.
I guess I should ask that question first.
Yeah.
But, okay.
And then also two on, uh, i- if you recall last fall, we, um, we added, um, a new or not added. But we amended our zoning and future land use map. Uh, this was identified in that future land use map that you passed, uh, last year, last year, uh, to have this zone commercial. Uh, this area as well as the area to the east of this or the church. So. If the church locates there, they could sure locate in the commercial or, uh, in A1 as well. Uh, just so you know that in that future land use map, that this, this property is identified as a commercial.
Councilmember Anderson.
That, my main question was, uh, Dale asked about the zoning to the east. When you initially look at this, the, the map that we were given it, it looks like we're zoning a piece in the middle of. Agriculture, agricultural land, we're rezoning it to commercial, but. In reality, that the parcel to the east will never be anything but either agriculture or commercial. It's not going, they're not going to put housing in there. It's, well, I guess they could.
Yeah, they could sell it.
Never say never.
Yeah. Councilman Anderson, you know, you never, you never know. Uh, but currently, yeah, the church does own that property and I, I have not spoken with them to see what their. Their plans are.
You said that, that, that parcel was included in an area that had been recommended to be rezoned.
Uh, on the future land use map. And so in the future, that could potentially, that was identified as a.
And, and who, who decides that? Is that our zoning and planning commission or?
Yes, and then, and then, and then you all, um, approve.
Right.
As a governing body.
I'm fine with redoing that then if, if that's what's. I'm fine with redoing that then if if that's what's in the long term plan anyway, so.
And and here this evening is is just the rezoning, so it's not, you know, the the use of that property as far as that potential copyright. That that's just in the application of why they're rezoning it. So that's the first step in their process of identifying what they want to do.
Councilmember Colbert.
Yeah, has any thought ever been given to the traffic pattern that's going to be on here with that coffee shop?
Um, that will be identified once we uh have a site plan and a traffic studies and those sets of things would have to be conducted potentially depending upon the the impact and what the size of the building is, parking stalls, all those things would would happen at a future date.
Be limited included, right?
Absolutely. Uh, and that's something that the governing body would be able to address as well at that given time.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson.
This is just step one. Once it gets rezoned, then they have to apply for all the other because this is, this has to be done before anything else. They're not going to incur the cost to do traffic study and and traffic flow count and all that, so.
True, okay.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance one three five four dash twenty one, rezoning of land located immediately to the east of the property addressed thirty fifty nine East Fifth Street, Valley Center, Kansas, from A one to C two for first reading.
Second.
I don't know. I couldn't hear where the second came from either.
Let's have all of Kersdatter.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, item C, approval of final payment of wastewater treatment plant project.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh for your consideration this evening is the final pay application on the Phase Three Treatment Plan Improvements. Um, just wanted briefly to say a great job to Don Langer. They did a truly a great job throughout construction as well as Rodney and his staff, who were able to maintain continuous operation of the plant during construction, which is not an easy thing. Um, so if there are no questions, we'd seek a motion of approval.
And council, just a reminder, this is a new process we are now going through. This is something that wasn't done in the past, but it's just to be more um uh transparent in what we do, so.
I move to approve final payment for wastewater treatment plant project in the amount of uh two thousand six hundred two dollars and ten cents. Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item D. Uh, resolution six nine seven dash two one for creation of tip.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. There's a few items on the agenda uh this evening that you'll be unfortunately having to hear from me. Uh, and so here, uh actually, I'm not going to say too much, but this is uh the tip uh the beginning of our process, of course. Uh, we heard from Iron Horse Development, who is in attendance as well as Garth and Dominic with Gilmore Bell, our founding counsel. It will kind of run down what you're looking at this evening uh what the resolution is, uh the map, uh the redevelopment district and legal description and kind of run you through the steps that we're going to uh be going down uh here in the next few months. So I'll turn it over to Garth and Dominic.
Eric Council.
Good to see you again.
Garth Herman with Gilmore Bell, the City's Bond Council. Appreciate you having me here. Uh, as Brent mentioned, we also have Dominic Beck from our office as well. He's one of our TIF and economic development experts. So if there's any questions that I can answer that may be possible, Brent or Dominic will be more than happy to fill the fill the gap on that. Um, as as he mentioned, um, the the main item before you tonight is this resolution to kind of start the establishment of the TIF district and in that process. Um, I know that at least to my knowledge, this is the first TIF uh that the city Valley Center has done. So I thought it might be helpful to kind of give you a a two minute kind of synopsis of tax increment financing in Kansas, kind of how it works and and kind of what it can be used for, just as as a way to kind of ground the the project and kind of give you an overall view of of what the process is going to look like, uh, you know, potentially over the next couple of months. Um, so generally in in Kansas, we we have what are called tax increment finance districts, TIF districts. Um, and the theory behind them is that there is land that is being used for some purpose right now, but that it may be able to be used for a a better, uh more developed purpose. And as that development occurs, then the value of that land will increase. Obviously, property taxes are levied on that on that property as well, so that as the value of that property increases, then the property tax revenue um also increases, you know, commensurate with that increase in the bout. And this this TIF district and this TIF statute is a way for basically uh a portion of that increased property tax revenue to be able to be segregated and set aside and then used to help pay for a portion of the project costs that were um that that were actually completed and and led to that increase in value of that property. So whenever I look at tips, I always kind of think about it in in three different steps. It helps me to kind of break it down. Um, the first step is looking at, is there an eligible area that a TIF district could be created at? Step one. Step two is then the city needs to take action to actually create that TIF district itself. Step three is then within that TIF district, the city will need to approve a project plan. And that is actually the plan that is the redevelopment of the property within that district. So three step process, i- they don't happen very quickly, to be honest. It's it's a multi-step process, which makes sense. It's it's uh, you know, it can be complicated. And it's also a use of taxpayer funds. So the state law wants to make sure that all of the affected property owners and in um taxing jurisdictions that may be affected by the TIP, by the TIF district. State law wants to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on and and has a notice of how that property and how those taxes may be used differently from how it's been used in the past. So if we kind of focus on those three steps and then look at this actual um, you know, plan that's that's before you tonight, step one, eligible area. One of the things we always have to look at is you can't just make a TIF anywhere. It has to be within an eligible area. One of those is a hundred year flood plan. In this case, the actual location of the project, a majority of the acres in that project area are within a hundred year flood plain as certified by Simeon, uh FEMA, sorry. So you pass the first step. Eligible area, check that box. Step two is kind of what's going on tonight. This is the first step in that process, the creation of the district. And so in order to um start that process, the city council needs to adopt a resolution that calls for a public hearing to be held on whether or not the district should be created. This is the form of the resolution that you have before you tonight. It authorizes the city to hold a public hearing on May the eighteenth. It authorizes a notice of that public hearing to be published in the local paper as well as to be mailed to the county, Sedgwood County, the local school district, USC two sixty two, and all of the owners of property within the potential uh project or within the potential district area. Once again, it's a way to provide notice to make sure that all of the affected stakeholders are aware of what's going on. Um, the resolution also includes a map and a legal description of the district and where it's proposed to be created at. And it also includes what's called a district plan. This is not, you know, the the down in the weeds um extremely detailed version of the plan that will come later on as as part of the actual project. This is more of the thirty thousand foot. This is the plan for, here is what we think will happen with the district. Once again, it's a way to kind of put everybody on notice. They get that notice of the public hearing. They're aware that uh that that the city is going to take steps in order to create this district. So state law and the city wants to make sure that all of those affected property owners and that they at least have a a somewhat general understanding of what the plan is for what's going to be built inside this inside this district. So that's step two. Pass the resolution, call the public hearing, provide the notice of that. As I mentioned, that public hearing is scheduled to occur on May the eighteenth. At the conclusion of that public hearing, that's basically step three. Once the city has, uh, I'm sorry, that that's that's the end of of step two. So you hold a public hearing, pass an ordinance to actually formally establish the district and notices given to the school district, given to the county to let them know district's been created. There's a thirty day period when the county or the school district can take action, basically saying, we don't like this TIF district. Once that thirty day period passes, though, that's the end of step. Then it's on to the project itself. That's when, in essence, there will be a lot of uh, you know, very detailed information about the specifics of what it is that's going to get built. Um, you know, whether it's not just the public infrastructure that's going to get put in and potentially repaid with the TIF, but also the actual projects, the housing, residential development, the commercial development, um, the governmental actions that will happen within that district and within that project area. All of that will go into that project plan. Um, and then once that plan is ready to go, the city will kind of go through a similar process to the to the district creation. You'll have another resolution, we'll call the public hearing on the project. Give notice, kind of like you did, um, you know, for the creation of the district. You'll hold the public hearing for the project plan. At the end of that, you'll pass another ordinance that approves the the project. And then once that's done, then basically everything can move forward. All that information goes to the county clerk, the county appraisers. That way they can set up a specific taxing jurisdiction for the TIF district that's legally described to set forth in this resolution. That way, the county will know on this specific property, we know what that valuation is at the time the district is created. That's the base value. All the taxes that are collected on that base value, they still go to all the taxing jurisdictions just like normal. So the city will still get its property tax, the county, the school district, the state of Kansas, anybody else leveling uh levying property taxes on that base value, they still get the revenue just like normal. But then within that defined district, once again, as the improvements start getting made, the value goes up. The property taxes are still levied on that property. But the property tax revenue that comes from the increment above and beyond that base value, that's the revenue then from the TIP, and that goes into a special trust fund to be held by the city. And then those TIP funds are only used to pay for eligible costs within the TIF district. Those eligible costs are going to be negotiated and set forth in that development agreement and that project plan. And that's really how the the whole kind of system goes. As I mentioned, it's it's a multi-month process. There's a lot of steps that go in there. Um, but we thought that it was important to kind of set the stage upfront, kind of give you the overview of how all of this will work. Now, as I mentioned, for tonight, first step in the process is uh creating this district. Resolution in front of you does that. As I mentioned, it calls for a public hearing, authorizes notice to be given. And it really does start the process on that. So with that being said, I'm going to pause for a minute because that was a lot of information. And I'm going to see if anybody has any questions, and I'll be more than happy to answer them uh to the extent that I can.
We do have someone in the audience that would like to speak on this item. Mister Whitaker. Did you want to speak on the TIF item? Yeah, we have, there there both the people here that want to speak are I as well as them, we're not quite sure where they wanted to speak at, so.
Yep, up to members in the, yeah, did you want to touch that or were you focused more on the grade?
Okay, then we're going to hold off.
Um, I did visit uh with Garrett and his wife earlier today.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that their comments might be easier for uh discussion during the Seneca, which is the last item underneath the new business. And I'm not sure who the other one was.
The other one wanted a similar, the similar stuff, right? Who the other? Okay, all right, then we'll, okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Wilson has a question for you, I believe, Garth.
Barry, can I have you roll back to the map real quick with the outline of the TIF area? I guess my question is, the TIF area coming south to Ford Street. Uh, we've got that area right there, that dark plot of of farmland. How come that's not in the TIF area?
So part of, part of the, I guess, art of of drawing the TIF district is you want to make sure to include the area that will be um, you know, developed as as part of the overall plan. And and you want to make sure to draw big enough so that any of potential projects that need to be funded from the TIF are included within the TIF district itself to to make sure that it passes legal muster. Um, at the same time, you don't want to draw it so big, though, that you bring in unrelated properties that that may not benefit as much from the potential projects. And so I I believe that with regards to this, part of the issue was also that for the city to create the TIF district, you want to make sure that the property that you're going to include in that district is located within city boundaries. And so there were parts of, if you, yeah, basically everything within the blue borders on that map, everything on the inside is is where the TIF district is going to be at. And so as you get down there into the kind of southeast corner, part of the reason why it kind of goes around like that is because I believe some of those areas are actually outside of the city limits and are in the county. And then that in it would uh make it harder for the process to try to include those within the TIF district.
Councilmember Gregory.
So this does not include all of Prairie Lakes.
Um, no, it does not. It includes uh the phases uh to the east that have not been developed uh to this point.
Can you zoom in on that?
Currently developed.
You zoom in.
Uh, on the, in the white there, the road.
There we go.
It does not include that area. So it's everything that doesn't have a house or a road to it to the east of that blue line. And it did include uh the area that you do see kind of on the west side there, uh the the blue ditch. Uh, that one, um, actually, that was at the request, um, kind of at the of the county uh to include that area as well in case there's additional uh recreation trails that may benefit that area that could maybe be used uh with the TIF revenues to pay for uh substantial sidewalks and recreational opportunities.
Councilmember Stan.
You just answered my one question. I was wondering how difficult that's county property to answer that one. On the meetings when people, school district, townships, how many of those does it take to shoot the thing in the foot? The if one objects as a gun or it's got to be a majority or if someone speaks up and don't care for it?
It can be either the county or the school district. They they have thirty, so basically after the public hearing for uh the district creation, that that may eighteen public hearing, there'll be a thirty day period. During that thirty days, either the county or the school district would have to adopt a resolution that that is makes a a finding that the TIP would have an adverse effect on. And if one of, it only takes one of them, but they have to have a majority of the board or a majority of the county commission approve that resolution. They have to take affirmative action to approve that. Um, and that's why, you know, informally and kind of practically speaking, that's why it's usually good. There are, you know, kind of legal things that you have to requirements that you have to meet. It's also good to to have informal discussions with those stakeholders just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's going on and and to try to um, you know, see if there's going to be any potential issues beforehand so that you can, you know, work to to make sure that all those are resolved.
And I believe we have had some preliminary discussions with the county and the the school district already.
Yes, of course. And and they helped us, you know, to identify and make sure that our boundaries that, you know, we're presenting to you this evening uh are are within their um, you know, boundaries as well in their consideration. Uh, because of course, uh like Garth said, you know, either one of those could kick that out. I do want to uh also uh remind you that we do have Tim and Kevin uh with Iron Horse Development LLC that that is doing this project. If you have any questions related to that as well, if they want to come up and visit with you as well or have questions for them, they are here with us.
Uh, Councilmember Kersdatter.
Uh, I think my answer might be, all right, answer my question might be no, but if we find during the development process that we need to add more area for the hundred year flood plain to the TIF project, is that doable or what's the, is that even? Because I'm looking at the map and to the east, there's more creek that keeps going around. Excuse me.
So you're talking to a lawyer, so everything is doable. That being said, uh, if you if you change the boundaries of the district to to add new property, you can do that. It requires basically going back to to this point.
Okay.
And and starting the the district process.
Okay. Just had to ask a question.
It was a good question. Yeah, I was curious.
And and then that's why also too, councilman, that um the property located uh right across to the east of the Prairie Lakes, the phase that we're discussing right now, uh that Mr.
the phase that we're discussing right now, uh, that Mister Whitmore, Whitaker, uh, is with us this evening, uh, that is in the county. So, that's not inside city limits. So, it's similar to that property to the south, where it would just add an additional step. Um, you can amend those things, but of course, you know, the county and the city and the school district, everyone would like to have, you know, kind of, uh, one opportunity, so then you're not amending this thing into decades and decades and decades.
Alright, any other questions? You did a great job explaining that. And it was, it's been explained to us before, but I, you, you really broke it down into the bits and pieces, so.
This is being recorded, right? So, I can go back to the explanation if I need to, on YouTube?
Yes, sorry, I'm not sure you're aware of that. We are on television now, and this is all recorded now.
It's probably good you didn't tell me that before. And also, two councilors, uh, if you recall our, 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 um, set of policies, package that was recently passed, uh, this is a section in that, that Mister Ryan Track had laid out and started walking through with you all when it came to the TIP creation, uh, what those fees are and all those things. They're also in that guidance, uh, back in February second.
Uh, motion to approve Resolution six nine seven dash twenty-one for establishing a redevelopment district and establishing the date and time of a public hearing, providing the giving of notice of such public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, I don't miss reading motions.
But you did it so well.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
You.
Alright, item E, temporary and permanent easement acquisition for Ford Street improvements.
I don't know if you want to rock, paper, scissors? Oh, good evening, Mayor and Council, once again. Just me. Uh, before you, uh, is, uh, an agreement between City Valley Center and the property owners on the corner of Broadway and Ford Street. Uh, this is located on the northwest corner, that is inside city limits. Right across the north from eighty-one Speedway, to give you a little location. This is part of the, uh, the Broadway, uh, Ford Street corridor. Uh, this will be where the new roundabout is, part of that KDOT, uh, project that we're working with in conjunction with Central County, uh, Park City and KDOT. Uh, and so, this goes all the way, like, before mentioned, to the interstate. Uh, so this is that area of this property owner's, uh, area that needs to be a temporary easement, and then also a permanent right-of-way, uh, for the drainage improvements that will occur, uh, because of the roundabout. Uh, before you hear is a legal description, as well as the costs associated, uh, with that. Questions?
Yeah. Let's start with Councilmember Stan.
This is all due to the roundabout, correct, going in?
Uh, yes.
If the, the, and the roundabout's Park City, so why isn't Park City paying for the easements?
Um, this one is inside of the project, uh, or inside of the corporate limits in Valley Center, in our right-of-way. So, this will be actually our right-of-way, where Park City's right-of-way is right to the east of this. Uh, this is also, we negotiated with the property owner to then locate, uh, a new welcome sign, uh, for the community. Right now, the welcome sign, I, I, if you call it that, uh, is located there on the corner. Uh, that's actually in Park City's right-of-way. That we had gotten permission years ago from the city administrator, uh, to locate that in Park City's right-of-way. We would like to have our own ownership, um, of, of a welcome sign, uh, that we are currently working with the school district, uh, in redoing. So, we want to make sure that that area, uh, that's why it's kind of a little bit larger there, so the north, uh, in orange is to also locate our welcome sign. So, we're kind of killing two birds with, with one stone, uh, with this, so to speak, to have that area to where we own it, we maintain it. Uh, and the Parks Department's doing a phenomenal job with looking at different options for welcome signs in the community. So, that's why this area is a little bit larger for that. Uh, also, too, if you recall, the project, uh, it's a large project, all the way from the Valley Center flood control to the interstate. Uh, this is due, uh, in part because of the Amazon facility being built in Park City. And so, this is part of, uh, negotiations that go into these agreements between communities. Uh, and this part is in the Valley Center city limits. We're happy to make sure that this drainage area is maintained by Valley Center, uh, and not another municipality. As this section of road is in Valley Center on the west side of this intersection. So, the intersection is kind of unique, because the west side is a part, that's an our right-of-way that we have to maintain, unfortunately.
No, you just brought some bad memories back from back in the day when that was all laid out. That's all I was.
I was trying to, I was trying to hurry.
I know, but yeah, that was, that was a whole, another, Councilmember Kirstetter.
See the welcome signs, they're going to be.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
So, about fifteen years ago, when I was looking for a house in this area, that area had, uh, Park City addresses. I know. And then, so, at what point did that become Valley Center city limits?
That's a great question for our city attorney, who's been here since the eighties, Mr. Arbuckle. Uh, Barry, you want to finish this, we're on TV, Mr. Arbuckle, do you want to come and approach the podium, sorry?
Come on, you got to get on, you got to get on camera.
My recollection was, David Smith, it was certain within the Park City, City Limits, so I assumed that area across the road was too. Is that Eldon Miller's old house?
Uh, he wouldn't know that. No, I don't think it is. I, I, I know it, um. Yeah, he's up, yeah, he's up. So, alright. Alright, alright, I'll do my best. At bringing back. This was, this was all back in the day when there was this mass annexations going on all over the county. I believe we took that land, and that would have been right about the time you were looking for a house, that that all happened. But I think we ended up taking, getting that land instead of Park City. And part of that had to do with Ford Street. Because they would have crossed Ford, and then the city limits would have ended to the, prior to the, the racetrack. So, we would have died there. And I think what happened is, and, and there may even have been the negotiations there, but I doubt it. At the time, we were not real friendly with Park City, so. Um, that's come a long way since I've been here, trust me, so, um. So, I think that's when that happened, is that we took that at that time. Um, you know, I always referred back to saying, gee, I wish Al was here. Because, you know, Al, Al knows his history, uh, he's our, he, I have, I've clarified him in my head as our, our city historian, so. Um, but yeah, I think that was taken right, and it was probably right in that timeframe that you were looking, so.
In two thousand and seven?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was about when, that's when I got on, that's, and that was when all that annexation stuff was going on here, so.
And so, this property owner, um, Mister David Smith, actually, uh, so, so he will get, he gets notices from the Park City side, if he doesn't maintain his right-of-way on the east side. But then, he would get noticed from Valley Center on the south side, if that right-of-way isn't maintained. So, it's a, it's a unique property.
Sounds like it.
Alright, any other discussion? Don't believe we have a motion on the floor yet, do we?
I moved to approve agreements for temporary and permanent easements with David J. Smith, in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and five dollars and thirteen cents. Duck it.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries, thank you. Alrighty. And item F, agreement with the City of Park City and Central County regarding improvements to East Ford Street, Seventy-Seven Street North. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. Uh, here before you, uh, is a three-party agreement, um, between the City of Valley Center, Central County, and Park City. Uh, this is similar to, uh, what was before you, uh, a few means ago with KDOT. Uh, that agreement was between, uh, KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation, Park City, and Valley Center. Now, this agreement is between, uh, Valley Center, Central County, and Park City. And then, it references, of course, our, our KDOT agreement, but KDOT's not named in this one. And so, the reason for this is, uh, thank you to Commissioner Lacy Cruz, uh, and Jim Weber, who is the Public Works Director, uh, and his staff, that they are going to be participating in the cost of this project, uh, for Park City and Valley Center. Uh, they will be, uh, having a in-kind, uh, contribution of five hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents for construction engineering services, that typically we would pay, and I'm so sorry, Josh and PEC, that we typically pay an engineering firm, uh, to do some of those, uh, things. Uh, and also, uh, it does have in there, um, a cash contribution, uh, for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents, uh, for a total not to exceed nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred, or six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents towards the project between Park City and Valley Center. So, as you read in this agreement, uh, Park City, uh, is also named in this, but Valley Center is in the lead, uh, as we are named as the lead responsible party on that KDOT agreement, because we have the larger stretch. And so, the first one that will be bid, uh, of course, is going to be the roundabout to the interstate. The reason for that is, I don't know if you've driven by, uh, Broadway at all, but, um, Amazon moves fast. I mean, they, it's incredible how fast a million square feet, uh, could be constructed. So, we want to make sure that that roundabout and the entrance to the interstate is done first. And then, that will give us time then to make sure that we have everything in line, as you see in our next, uh, agenda items. Uh, we do have some changes, making sure that we have everything, uh, for our Ford Street to, to what the public, uh, will benefit from the most. And so, that side will be first, and then our side will be second. So, that's why we're, uh, named as, as kind of the lead in, in this agreement as well. Questions?
Councilmember Kirstetter.
Remind me the timeline, when does the, the roundabout construction start?
Josh, you want me to, or it's up to you? Okay, um. Let me remember.
Josh, you want to come up?
All, all the documents, uh, have been prepared, uh, for the roundabout to the interstate. Uh, those are being advertised as we speak, uh, soon. Uh, go ahead there.
Uh, so, we're looking at a timeframe towards the end of May, uh, to where we would have a pre-construction meeting and contractor onboard, and, and start construction soon thereafter. So, Valley Center's portion, um, basically from the west leg of Broadway into the floodway, would begin towards the tail end of that construction. We're prioritizing the intersection due to the development. Um, and then seamlessly moving into Valley Center's portion thereafter, looking to begin that in the late July, August timeframe.
So, my, my main question is, when should I avoid that intersection? Starting in June?
June would be reasonable.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Why did I have this feeling that's where you really wanted to go?
It's already bad right now, so.
Yeah, alright. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Moved to approve agreement with City of Park City and Central County, and authorized Mayor Cesarelo to sign all documents associated.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Motion carries, thank you very much. And we're moving on to G, supplemental agreement with PEC for the design modifications to intersection of Ford and Seneca.
Do you want to start, or you want me to, it's up to you? Oh, sorry, I'll go ahead. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so, the design has originally authorized, full by city council, included the relocation of the south leg of Seneca. So, if you're familiar with the area, um, the intersection does create a safety issue. It's offset with the south leg being located west of the north leg. Um, so, the original design included relocating that south leg over to align with the north. Since the recent property acquisition on the northwest corner of Ford and Seneca, um, we are now able to expand the north leg of that intersection to accommodate the development that we've already discussed this evening. So, unfortunately, we were already at a point of about eighty percent through our design, prior to, um, engaging the property owner and realizing that this was a real opportunity for the city to really enhance the whole area and support all this development. So, the way I'd look at this is probably one step backwards, two steps forwards, um, just in the perspective of the overall area. So, supplemental agreement, uh, basically includes, um, adjusting the design to account for the south leg remaining where it is currently at, and accommodating the future connection of the north leg, moving west.
So, this is where you guys wanted to speak, right? Uh, you're Mister, uh, Sumner, why don't you go ahead and step up to the podium? Just state your name and address, even though I have it, just for the public record, and then, uh.
Hey, my name is C.R. Sumner, I live at seventy-eight forty North Seneca. Uh, I have a couple of questions and concerns. Uh, I talked to Brent when I come in, he answered a lot of them, but I just kind of liked it out, so we could all talk about it. He gave me this picture. I live on, uh, the house right where that you're going to put the driveway over the center, right there, that's my. So, my question was how I was going to get out of there, and this really explains it, I don't have no problem with that. You know, I love living here in Valley Center, I got two adult kids, moved here after the fact. My main concern is, three, four years ago, Cory Engineering went through there and remapped the flood zone. I am not in the flood zone. I've lived there for probably eleven or twelve years, and I think I've lived through three hundred-year floods.
If, yes, I believe that number is about right.
Very delicate what you do with the water. As soon as that water goes over Ford Street, then it relieves the pressure. So, my concern is, you know, very delicate, you only get one chance to get this right. And hope that you can guarantee me peace of mind that I don't have to go buy a shank pump.
I believe, and, um, Mister Gold could probably address this better, but the, the, our biggest concern with this whole area is exactly your concern, which is part of what this whole TIP district is. Because that's where that money's going to, is going to deal with the drainage issues that that area has.
You guys should do the right deal.
And, and yes, but, but both sides of the street have been taking it to consideration, and, um, based on what I'd seen in the preliminaries, it sounds, I'm not an engineer, he is, but it sounds to be like, it, it's, it's going to be addressed well, so.
This whole deal comes about kind of quick because of the Amazon thing, so just make sure that, you know, everyone's going for it, getting it right.
Very, you, you, very, very deserved concerns on your part.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm cool with the driveway deal that you got. I don't have no problem with that.
Okay.
Actually, I love living here. I got no problems, I just don't want to have a problem.
Great, thank you. If you have any other questions, please call Brett. He's, this guy's, he's like, he's like Western Union or, or nine-one-one, he's always there. Yeah, always there.
Email on vacation.
Yeah. It, it did.
Be surprised.
Did Mister?
Uh, the other gentleman, uh, he's farther to the north, uh, on, on this stretch. And so, I think when we talk about the Seneca, uh, portion and concept, that that's more pertinent to that. Um, we just brought that up, because we don't have a, a copy that, that's as detailed, uh, in the actual item on the agenda for the realignment and what's before you right now, which is a supplemental agreement with PEC to design the north half versus the south half that they had already designed, because we kind of got late in the game on that side.
Alright, I'm going to let Councilmember Wilson ask his questions first. I do have a comment on this as well.
Okay, Josh, money, it always seems to be money with you, and, and I'm looking at this.
Yes, it is.
I'm having, I'm having some heart, heartache with this. So, what, if, can you break out what the design cost was for that intersection? What was the total cost for the engineering design piece of just that intersection?
I, I don't have that readily available.
Okay, you're telling me you've gone through it eighty percent? I want to know what that dollar amount was, because I want to, I want to be able to come, come back to my constituents and say why you're asking for another forty-six thousand.
Sure, sure. Um, so, there, there was around six hundred thousand dollars of money that's actually being moved around in this discussion. So, I, I understand the supplemental represents very real money, and I will not downplay that. But, um, we, you know, we've got a project budget adopted for the Ford Street project, through all of these agreements. So, with the, uh, Seneca application that we'll discuss later this evening, the realignment of that north leg, which was previously the south leg, all of those dollars are being shifted to that. So, we've got, uh, significantly more budget available within the Ford Street project. So, i- it's actually going to end up freeing up around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars overall, including the supplemental moving in. Uh, I apologize that I don't have a, a detailed breakdown. Our, our typical approach is, uh, as a percentage of construction. So, we do our construction cost estimates, and then design fees, you know, are usually in the seven to ten range. I think with this project, we were actually, actually closer to six percent. Um, so, same approach with the supplemental, we looked at the cost, that was also helpful for some of the conversations that we're engaging KDOT through, um, to justify what this fee was. And I don't know if the administrator wants to, uh, you know, obviously, he bets all of these things. This is not, uh, the first time these numbers get thrown out there, so I, I certainly understand your concern.
Yeah, it's, it's hard for me to say, putting a little bend in Seneca costs forty-six thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm, I'm simplifying it terribly much there, but, but it's, it's tough for me to swallow forty-six thousand. And I'm 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 simplifying it terribly much there, but but it's it's tough for me to swallow forty-six thousand and put a little bend in there.
Drainage is a significant challenge.
I bet it is, yeah.
That's a very large portion of the, so it's it's more than just lines on a piece of paper.
Correct.
Um there there's study that that goes into this and we previously had a plan that was gonna try to accommodate drainage on the the southeast corner. Obviously with this alignment, um now we're looking to handle that elsewhere. I will say to address some of the concerns spoken earlier, uh we are professional uh licensed engineers. Health, wellness and public safety goes through that with the Board of Technical Professions. Um and we're not here to design or create a situation that's negatively impacting anyone as a result of development. I wouldn't be standing here before you this evening saying, please approve this supplemental if it was gonna create a negative impact.
No, I I I completely agree. I know you've gone through your due diligence on making sure, and I know this is a a huge thing about water flow and making sure we got it right. I know putting a bend in there does change that water flow tremendously from a straight shot that it was before, so.
Thanks, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Anderson.
I just wanted to address a gentleman that spoke earlier and I forgot to write your name down. I wrote down your address. I I have very much appreciate you coming forward and addressing your concerns with us because there's a lot happening very fast. And it's not just one project. The 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 seventy-seven, the Ford project was pushed forward because of the Amazon building and because of the amount of K dot dollars that we were gonna receive by teaming up with Park City and Central County. But I I just wanted to relay our concerns that it it's moving fast for us also and our staff is doing a great job. And if you guys ever have any questions, please ask because because there are, there's a lot moving at 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 one time. And um there's a lot of information for us to digest as well and it it's all kinda happening together because of each other. So um you know, we don't wanna overlook anyone and and we, I just wanna let you know, we appreciate you coming forward and and discussing your issues.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
Where is this uh supplemental money coming from? Since we already paid eighty percent, I'm hoping twenty percent still left over.
We haven't bonded or ten noted or anything yet for this, so we're still building that initial cost. Um but the end game with all this and the timing is perfect because we'll be able to do one issuance for this one and both Meridian projects at the same time. So we have one cost of cost of issuance. We're gonna save about two hundred and forty, three hundred thousand dollars there. And it's all gonna be done with one project. So the uh cost savings overall is huge. I mean, our our end goal here is we're gonna bond less than three million for all those three projects combined total. So we have some room to work with.
We we can cover initially and then we're gonna just uh finance it.
Yep.
Alright. Thank you. It is a hard number.
Now, just. And and it's a great question, sir. Great question. You'll, as long as Dorth is is satisfied with that, then we're all good to go.
And just just a side note on this project, I don't know if any of you read the front page of the Art Valley News last week, but um the the gentleman that did the that did the walking tour, the driving tour, he actually explained why Seneca was broken like that in that article, which was very interesting. And it has to do with the old Wild West days to and it had to do with the fifth and sixth parallels. And I have no idea what any of that means, but there was an actual definition in there as to why the why Seneca was not straight through, which I found was very interesting because here we are, I'm doing that. So so it was a very interesting, if you hadn't seen it, it's a really interesting article and uh the library has it on their website, that whole story. Um and it was really interesting to read. I have yet to to take the whole drive. My family wants to do that and we probably will. But it was a very interesting read and and uh not being a native Valley Center and I love reading about the history of this town and and all the stuff that the the Historical Society does. It's really interesting to learn that. So that was just my take on that. Uh so moving right along, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve P E C supplemental agreement for design modification to the intersection of Ford and Seneca in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars unauthorized mayor to sign.
But second, you have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, item H supplemental agreement with P E C for waterline project on Ford Street.
Thank you again. So uh everything previously approved to date has been related to street drainage infrastructure. Um there are some moving pieces and I'm not sure exactly what I'm allowed to disclose in terms of other development that is uh currently being considered in the area. Well, one of the real challenges um on East Ford has been that there is a rural water district line, but there is not a city water, city water line. Oh, I'm struggling with that. Uh so one of the issues with that uh is that the rural water district line cannot support uh fire protection. So relative to some of the developments that are being considered in the area, this project includes the uh design bidding and construction of a waterline extension along the uh north side of Ford. Currently, our waterline stops at uh I think just east of Prairie Lakes near the Seneca intersection. So we look to continue that out on the north side of the road through Broadway.
Questions, Council?
Councilmember Scam.
When the city provides water service to a house, do they have to reimburse the rural water district for taking that customer?
I believe there's a flat fee. Uh there's a, there's a one-time flat fee uh that we do pay uh for for tapping in and having that customer transfer to a city customer versus the rural water.
Does the rural water district, though, get reimbursed for losing the customer? I know in Derby.
Yep, they just get a one-time, one-time fee. It's it's not like other agreements where there's percentage uh or any of those things a monthly that go to uh rural water districts. So whoever negotiated that contract did a phenomenal job uh on behalf of a Valley Center and for the rural water district. Also, too, you gotta remember that, you know, we are the main source of their of their water supply as well. So that may have tied uh into some of those negotiations that happened when those agreements were made.
Councilmember Kirstetter.
I gotta ask this question. And I know P E C does a good job. Have we ever contracted or asked for other estimates from other engineering firms?
Yes, absolutely. I'm a firm believer in uh making sure that P E C is being held accountable. Uh I floated prices that they have quoted to us to other engineering firms I had that I have actually personally worked with for ten-plus years in my career. Uh and they have been doing a phenomenal job with their percentage of scope and fee that they are charging the city of Valley Center.
Yeah.
If it was higher, uh then I would be switching, uh recommending that to the city council as that is my obligation.
Thank you.
To the citizens.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wills.
Josh, this may be out of your scope or too early in the project, but do we have a rough idea of of hydrants, number of hydrants that would fall within that lineage of pipe along with residential tie-ins?
Yes. Uh if you'll excuse me for one second, let me get my very detailed estimate and then we can talk through all the unit prices, measurement and payment and we're just.
He's excited.
And Chief Counsel, I do want to uh moment here. Um this will help. Uh if you do recall and looked in the legals uh for the newspaper last week, uh there was a replating uh preliminary plat that was identified in the paper. Uh this will help to loop uh that subdivision that will be for you uh asking some questions at next council meeting. So this isn't just going to nowhere ending, uh so you're aware.
Josh, I think I'm gonna tie this into, and maybe Chief Newman could speak to as well, if this would affect uh fire ratings on on those residences along that street with that increase. From which or from our water supply? Would that?
Sure.
Alright.
So while we have a moment, uh so the project includes approximately thirty-two hundred feet of twelve-inch pipe. Uh we have included a directional drill option to help mitigate some of the property acquisition as well as just the area disturbance costs. Um of course, we've got valving, including some special anchored valve assemblies that will accommodate future extensions uh to where we don't have to interrupt service to the newly installed main. Uh we've got a total of eight fire hydrants included. We may be able to pare that down as we get more specifics onto the development, but upwards eight. Uh and then all the other costs for staking, clearing, restoration, mobilization, erosion controller included as well.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Chief Newman?
If you could repeat the question.
Yeah, sure. So I just want with that new service line along the north side here, would that affect fire ratings on those residents along there? And we have insurance costs?
Insurance, I think it'll help a little bit with the insurance. The biggest thing, I mean, having those there is gonna um it's gonna allow us to to be able to access or get to it quicker, you know, having the hydrants. Uh right now, you know, when we go out in certain areas, we have to rely on tankers for the water uh if we don't have the water line. So that that's the biggest help as far as getting to the fires faster, getting more water to the fires faster.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve P E C supplemental.
Hold on a second. Is this what, is this the item you wanted to talk on? Go ahead, you.
We have a a concept level at this point. Um so there is a rural water district line that we have to maintain some spacing for, but we'll work with either within the existing right of way or directly adjacent to it. Um so I I don't have a specific number at this time, but it it will be very close to within the existing utility corridor that's there now.
And how far, all the way up to Broadway?
Uh so we we're including accommodations to Broadway to, but to better control the cost upfront. The actual installation stops about a thousand feet short of Broadway, uh maybe less five hundred feet. Um and that's just going to be to our tie-in connection at the furthest east development that we are considering at this moment. So.
Okay.
Make it all the way to Broadway, but we'll go ahead and include all the design provisions as well as property acquisition, if necessary, to accommodate that line installation. So we're not coming back and and asking for a supplemental later.
Did that answer, did we get our question answered? Okay. Alrighty, so go ahead and make the motion again. Have we even motioned it yet? I stopped.
I move to approve P E C supplemental agreement for design and installation of waterline along Ford Seventy-seventh Street in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars unauthorized mayor to sign.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Item I. Gee, another supplemental agreement with P E C.
But we we were trying to be somewhat strategic in breaking these out, A, so that we could have separate discussions, but also that there's potential for different pots of money covering some of these expenses.
Right.
That's why we're all falling in three parts rather than one agreement. So this has to do with one of the developments um that we've been discussing. And they and their engineer have approached the city requesting a drive at a certain location that currently impacts drainage on a pretty significant level. And this is kinda towards the east half um of the City of Valley Centers portion, where the drive is or their proposed drive is being requested um has a pretty significant crossroad box structure that we'd be looking to accommodate um as well as falling at a place in the road profile that would create some sight distance, some safety issues. So again, we're unfortunately at that eighty percent design level, but we are looking at some pretty wholesale changes to uh both the horizontal and the vertical geometry in the area, and there's costs associated with that effort. There any questions?
Councilmember Wilson.
Playing to me a little bit about your horizontal and vertical changes, talking about taking the hills out in that section of the road?
Yes, so there's um, there's two things to think about in terms of um safety and sight distance as you're traveling a road. You've got the peaks and the sumps and both have, you know, impacts to it. So with this drive being located almost perfectly at a sump location, A, we've got the physical construction of moving the the crossroad culvert, the box there. But then also, we need to make sure that vehicles turning in and out of this development um can see and are seen as they're coming out of the area. So our previous approach and and the design that was their concept that was approved by council and where we'd really gotten to this eighty percent design was based off of tying into the existing drives at their current locations, at their current widths or a city minimum width. Um so this is a a pretty significant increase in terms of going from a twelve-foot residential drive or fifteen-foot residential drive um, you know, to a thirty-foot wide, three-lane turn lanes, tapers, as well as adjusting the the drainage and the vertical aspects of the street that we've already gotten to this point on.
Thank you, sir.
This is the item? I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to him yet. I wanna make sure. I just don't want you to leave without missing it. I wanna make sure you get it. Alright, alright, okay. Councilmember Kirstetter.
So this potential development that we're talking about is in city limits.
Yes, sir.
Um can we offset some of this cost to like a special tax? Or do we even need to worry about that?
Um there'll be specials throughout this subdivision uh as far as the entry points and.
I'm thinking offsetting the supplemental because they came to us after the fact.
Um we've been in a discussion with them for for a while and so this uh city staff uh knew that this supplemental was gonna come at some point in time. Uh we weren't exactly sure, you know, what point. And so that's kinda why we didn't include in the original agreement uh with the full-blown uh entry uh for right turn and and left turn.
I think you answered my question, but not really. Okay. I just, I was more could we offset the twenty-five K with special tax assessed to that development since we're only doing this supplemental agreement to accommodate this de- development?
We sure ask them and and get back with you at the next council.
Councilmember Anderson.
What is the potential tax-based increase for this development to the City of Valley Center?
Uh the in the first phase, um it'd be be north of thirteen million um of total um potential assessed valuation.
So so this is somewhat of a concession by the city to help them make up their mind of putting this development in?
Yeah, so it'll be additional residential uh that will have a great impact to the community and the surrounding area.
Our tax, our tax impact realization will
will offset this, yes. Could've said that.
Council.
I move to approve P E C supplemental agreement for design and modifications to the Ford Seventy-seventh Street project in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars unauthorized mayor to sign.
Second. The motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh where are you on item J? Approval of K dot cost share application for Seneca from Seventy-seventh Street to Eighty-Fifth Street. Okay.
Mayor, here you go. This is the opportunity.
Just when people come in the chambers, which we don't get a whole lot of, trust me, I wanna make sure you're heard. That's the only reason. So and I know we have, you know, like we said earlier, there's a lot of different things going on right now that are affecting that area, so. You go ahead, take your mask off. Just state your name and address and.
Good evening. Um my name is Garrett Withard. Uh I live at eight one-one-zero North Seneca Street. Uh it's the, it was the rectangular property that was still county on the east side of Seneca.
Could you step in a little closer to the mic, please? Thank you.
Can you hear me now? So I guess my concerns with the development are same as C R's and I actually have all the neighbors on the south side of my property are here uh with the changes, with the uh the TIV, TIF and the uh the road, the flooding. Uh I'm, I know we want to approve it, so it just gets better for everyone. Um I guess specifically.
Can you zoom in on, can, hold on, can you zoom in on that? So we got a better, okay.
Um if you wanna pull up Google Maps, it might.
There we go.
Where are we? Okay, so that large rectangle, that's actually mine.
Okay.
And then the houses to the south, like I said, all my, all my neighbors are here. Basically, any changes that you make to the area for the TIF to the floodplain. Uh my one concern, I was reading through the the Valley Center floodplain rules, I guess it's the flood hazard protection. Uh there's a paragraph, now I'm getting real specific and maybe I'm too early for this. Maybe it's not a concern yet. Um under general standards, paragraph three. Um, under general standards, paragraph three, uh, any uh, when combined with other existing and anticipated development, development will not increase the water surface elevation of the base floodplain more than one foot in any uh, point in the community. I know the houses, the hundreds of houses in Prairie Lakes, maybe Fiddler's Run, and then my home and the neighbors to my south. Twelve inches makes a huge difference, even though it says here that they could do it. I would prefer any development done and not change the base floodplain at all.
Yeah, and 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 as I explained to to him too, the whole purpose really of this T I V district and those farms are going to deal with the drainage. I mean, that's really what that's all for. And we realize how bad that is. I mean, there's the the small bridge that has been the problem for a long time is is gonna be dealt with. And I'm sure, I'm not sure if either one of you saw the potential design of this area yet. But there will be a large, large retention pond on that property too. So yes, we are keeping everybody on both sides, you know, and then both of you live in, both of that is county, right? Or either one, either one of. Okay, just you, okay. So yes, we are going to make sure we don't definitely make it worse for you guys. We don't want that to happen. That's there's. And and like I said, the, one of the things we discussed earlier within this project was, and that's what Iron Horses also understands, is they know what they've got. And um, we know that we can't, well, it it's gotta be dealt with, not only for their area, but yes, everybody that's on the other side of Seneca as well. So. And um, I'm, at this point, I'm not, you know, because we don't really have the designs laid out, but um, uh, definitely keep in touch and um, you guys will be given notices. I mean, we're gonna have, when we get to the public hearing stuff, when, as this stuff moves further and further down the line, you will be notified because you are both in, you're all in the area. So you will be getting notifications of the public hearings and um, at any time, we'll get, you can get whatever you want on looking on this project too. I mean, but no, we definitely wanna make sure both sides are taken care of. And yes, we don't wanna, we don't wanna heal, fix it here and then make it worse here. Cause that's still, that's not solving the problem at all. So. But I I, like I said, just, you know, ask your questions whenever you, whenever you don't, don't hesitate. Like I said, he's, he's, he's like nine one one. He'll answer his phone twenty four hours a day. So um, and yeah, the last thing we wanna do is upset anybody. So. If there is anybody, you guys, I'm, go ahead, come on up, come on up and just state your name and address. Sure.
My name's Rick Taylor. My address is eighteen sixteen East Ford. I I'm directly south of his place. I, my first question is, when they redo Ford Street, are they gonna raise it at all?
No.
They won't raise the elevation.
No, well, I'll let, I'll let engineer, you wanna answer that or do you want, I mean, that's.
So, so one of the core concepts or design approach is to maintain the overflow routes. We understand that this area of the world is small, game of not even half inches, you know.
Exactly.
That's how sensitive the flooding is. And so the overtopping elevations about the area are personally.
If you raise the road at all, that's what you're gonna do is you're gonna create your dam and turn my place into a lake. And it it already gets a lot of standing water in there and everybody knows that, but um, if you come up without putting in some type of way for the water to get under the road or channeling in an opposite direction, then it's back up all over me and.
Yes, sir. And I I believe the administrator would vouch that over the past several months, we've had several very intense meetings with the design team to specifically review the drainage in this area. Like if we were.
Okay, that that was the question I had.
And and like I said, any of you, don't hesitate to ask questions. Okay, please don't. Go ahead, Mr. Suck, go ahead. Sure.
Yes. There, there, there's gonna be uh, kind of a combination. Fifth Street is probably a good example of of something that you can go out and drive. And where we can accommodate curb and gutter and storm sewer, we have, there's gonna be other sections that, you know, to maintain those overtopping routes and not negatively impact folks. We just, there's not enough depth to get storm sewer in the ground without raising the road and flooding somebody. So unfortunately, you know, there are gonna be areas where we look at an open ditch section, but then transition that into more of a city standard curb and gutter storm sewer, uh, where able.
So like you said, like similar to what we did just recently up at the north there end of Fifth Street.
Right, where, where, where the existing ground is high enough to accommodate storm sewer, we will. Where it's not, we'll, we'll maintain those overtopping routes through a a mat pavement and open ditch section.
And if, if, if you even paid attention to that, but if you have, you just go up Fifth Street, you'll see how that transitions into that. So that's, that's what he's talking about. So. All right. Are there any other questions or there, are we?
Now, I do want to uh, make sure that uh, the public knows as well and all of our viewers, viewers at home. Uh, this is the first time that the mayor and council have have seen, uh, and we've presented any concepts when it comes to Seneca. Uh, so Seneca, this is exactly what it is. This is just a concept. And so the engineers have not done any field design or any surveying yet to know exactly which points could potentially be open ditch uh, or curb and gutter and all those. So, so this is the first step uh, of the process. So you come at a great time. You haven't missed, you haven't missed anything yet uh, as far as being on the agenda. So this is the first time that the mayor and council are seeing this as well. Uh, this is actually how uh, Ford Street uh, got started. We applied for a cost share grant. Uh, we were denied very three times, two times. I I forget. They said no so many times, they just gave us another grant uh, out of a different pot of money because they're sick of hearing from us. And so Seneca, that's what the item uh, before the council tonight is, uh, is to apply for the K dot uh, cost share application for Seneca between Eighty Fifth or Fifth, whichever one you wanna call it. Uh, and Seventy Seventh or Ford, uh, the north-south stretch there uh, to handle all the development that's occurring on the uh, west side of Seneca uh, here in the near future. Uh, this will include turn lanes, center turn lane, as you see, uh, the dollar bounce that I proposed, of course, I fell over as well as, as I'm sure all of you did. I I called Mr. Golka and I said, please revive me. I I've fallen out of my chair. But this is the really high overview of looking at what the potential cost if all of these things happened on Seneca. Um, and so right now, what we're applying for, uh, what we need approval for is doing half uh, for the cost share uh, application. The reason for that is the K dot did receive additional COVID nineteen related money uh, through the last stimulus package, that they now have additional funds. And the higher your percentage is gonna be, more likely you are to receive funds, the way that you pay for that, uh, Councilman Kurt Satter. Uh, is also help then with using T I V revenues to help offset that cost on the taxpayers. So that is why if you drive out there right now, you'll see the stakes in the ground uh, for the T I V project are on the east side of Seneca. The reason for that is because it's included in the T I V district that you passed uh, for the first public hearing earlier this evening. Questions?
Counsel. The questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve K dot cost share application unauthorized to merit sign.
Second. The motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving along to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to staff reports. Mr. Shrek is on baby duty, so he won't be here as there is nobody here to speak for him. Mr. Clark, don't be ducking your head. Is there anything that he was left with you to speak or anybody to speak for?
The community development, uh, community development is extremely busy uh, right now, as you can tell with all the developments going on. Angie uh, and Bill and his department are doing a phenomenal job uh, with answering questions. I am filling in uh, as interim, I guess, planning zoning administrator. So if you do have any questions, please let me know and I'm happy to address them.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Owens. Chief Newman. Beautiful. Mr. Eggelstead. Here's always one.
Brief, I'm extremely excited to be able to announce our wastewater operator, our new wastewater operator, Gaylord. He successfully accomplished the requirements to become Level Two wastewater certified. So that's one more step toward our redundant certifications in our public. So congratulations.
Yes, very much. This is the little whiz kid that's, that's taking care of you out there, isn't it? Is this the one that came up with all these new ideas?
I'm, I'm gonna let you own that title.
But that's who you're talking about right? Yeah. Great. Uh, Mr. Golka, you think you've had enough? All right. Thank you. Mr. Arbuckle. Great. Mr. Smith.
Uh, just a few items to touch on here. A couple of Fridays ago, Governor Kelly did sign a new budget law, um, into effect immediately. So we will go through a new process this year. Uh, good thing is there's no more tax lid, been clearly repealed. Uh, so we'll be presenting a revised budget calendar one meeting later. Our next meeting here on the twentieth to kind of outline that process, outline those steps and give y'all something to look forward to as we move through our next budget cycle there. Um, also been monitoring the uh, American Recovery Plan, stimulus bill that was signed into law here not too long ago. And including in that plan is a lot of dollars allocated to local governments for infrastructure, especially sewer, water and broadband. So we're looking at those and seeing what kind of allocation we'll eventually get uh, to put towards some of those projects. Also, our senior association is gonna be opening back up on April thirteenth. I don't know if Councilmember Anderson had something to speak, something to speak about that or you can talk about that during your.
I'll just add real quick, we're gonna start doing in-person meals again. We met uh, city staff and and the um, our volunteers met and discussed kind of a reopening, what that looks like and spacing and and uh, social distancing. We are gonna, we started doing a uh, carry out curbside a year ago. Um, we're gonna continue that because we have a lot of people that are are uh, immunocompromised, that do not wanna come back. Um, or or started coming because they couldn't come before. Um, so we're gonna have in-person and to-go meals. So we've kind of changed our schedule a little bit with that, but we're welcoming, welcoming them back and it's been a long, hard year, but I think we got through it. So.
And along with that, as well as we have to submit a reopening plan to the Seton County Department of Aging, notifying them of all of our health precautions in place, um, you know, contactless services, what kind of activities we're doing, how we're maintaining our social distancing and all those things. So. Surely that'll be approved pretty soon and then we're glad to welcome back our seniors. Thank you. Thank you.
I was just waiting till you were done with your, your sip of coffee there, sir. Mr. Clark.
I do apologize. There has been a lot of me talking tonight. Uh, make sure you check out all the flag merchandise that is hitting the stores, of course. I was the first one. I had to be the first one to get a, a coffee mug, of course, from, from Ann's attic. Uh, but also so much more, uh, has merchandise as well. So really excited for uh, Mr. Ryan McCormick's flag to really be seen and there'll be additional information coming out when, when flags themselves. I didn't realize how hard it'd be to, to get flags, but Ann is grabbing the bull by the horns and taking care of it uh, for the community. Uh, also too, did want to make sure the council is aware, uh, did send out a memo uh, that our mask policy for city staff is still in effect uh, while during nor, normal working hours. Uh, this is due to uh, the percentage uh, of employees that have received their vaccines and been fully vaccinated. So we are requiring still masks uh, for city staff, as well as the public coming into our public buildings uh, when they're using the lobby ways uh, at City Hall, uh, public safety and public works, uh, as well as the senior center. And so I did want to give you an update on that as well. And also, uh, this coming Friday, Mr. Neil Owens will be celebrating a birthday. So happy birthday uh, to Neil on Friday. I'll stand for any questions.
No wonder, no wonder he just peeked around the corner and said nothing and then ducked back in there so fast. No, we won't. We won't. Any questions for our city administrator, folks? None? Then we will move on to governing body reports. I have nothing to report. I did go, I did, should say, I did go out to the Easter egg uh, drive through, that's the flow from what I understand and uh, they were real busy while I was there. It was, it was probably halfway through it when I showed up. So. But um, thanks again to everybody that that got involved with that. Uh, Chief Newman got to use the stuff in his new, in the new trailer that we got for him and uh, so it went pretty well. Um, other than that, I have nothing else. Uh, Councilmember Stan.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Evans.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Davis.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Anderson.
I was gonna talk about the senior center, but we went over that already. I did just wanna thank everyone that showed up here to talk that lives uh, in the areas that are affected and Stein Kirscher stuck out before I got to talk to them. We really appreciate you guys showing interest and showing up and and we do this to protect other citizens like us. Um, and I will say on Mr. Golka's behalf, if you've lived here for very long and know what, and if you lived here for a really long time, you know what Baxter Springs was, the area that we took care of on Meridian with our, and Seventy Seventh, with the flood, uh, the flood retention pond that we put in. You understand what flooding is and what it can be and and you've had nothing but problems in your areas. That is then, one of the main areas of us creating that T I V district is to mitigate the water issues to begin with. So we have the proper funds, we're not skipping anything. So we're not trying to push things onto other properties. And we're addressing that. And I just wanna make sure you guys understand that that's our intent. And thank you all for showing interest and showing up.
Councilmember Gregory.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Kersdatter.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
I'm good. Thank you.
And Councilmember Colbert.
I have nothing. There's no further business. Make a motion that the council be adjourned.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Approve this day. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.